United States of America.
One nation, under God.
And of liberty and justice and all.
All.
Okay, thank you everyone. First item on the agenda is the agenda, approval of the agenda.
Both to approve?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Any changes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
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 opposed? Okay, um, next item is what we call public comment, but we have you on the agenda, so next, fortunately, so, since there isn't any other public here, we'll just move down to new business. And I think everyone has or was sent a map of this, but this request for a boundary line adjustment. We have with us the new owners of one of the properties there. The one that is labeled Ingalls oh eight two zero oh eight. If I'm correct with that. And um, yeah, the patches are here because they'd like to do a boundary line adjustment, but there are some survey. Inconsistencies. Or, you know, there's some, some that are missing for some of the property lines. So I will turn it over to the patches and.
Hook the table because of the way, that way they all can hear you on the microphone. That'd be very helpful.
Thanks, Bill.
Barbara, excuse me, on, on the map I have, unless I'm missing something, I, I don't see that whole lot. I see an oh eight two oh oh nine. And I don't see patch.
Okay, these are the new owners, the patches.
The property transfer norm is not reflected on the tax maps yet.
No.
So it's labeled Ingalls, I N G A L L S.
Uh, I understood. Okay, I see it now. Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you very much.
See this through, uh, you know, where you are right now.
Okay, so we're, we're very early stages in this. And my wife and I came the other day to see if our land was fully surveyed here in the town offices. And what we found was our neighbors is the people that we would like to do a boundary line adjustment. And by looking at this map, I mean, there's a tax map and there's a deed. Well, what got surveyed officially in ours was the one eighty seven. And the one eighty three measurement, which abuts the fusils. What we couldn't find was the one seventy nine and the two sixty five that is towards the main road. So it looks like. Our one acres maybe half surveyed, half not. So in order to follow. The rules with a boundary line adjustment. It said that it needed to be fully surveyed. The boundary line adjustment we would like to do, it comes off the side that is surveyed, the one eighty seven and the one eighty three. With the fusils. So we know that that is surveyed. So the question is, we're, can we move forward with the information that is present? Or will a full survey of our land be required to reflect the one seventy nine and the two sixty five, which is? Is accurate. There are boundary markers, there are marble posts, and those measurements are accurate. But again, we can't find anywhere where those are actually surveyed. So the question is, can we move forward? With this and fill out our forms and get the, you know, we have to get the exact acreage that we're looking to adjust with the fusils. We believe it to be around two acres. But again, the question is, can we move forward? Are you going to require? You know, our formal survey of our property? Beside.
Will there be another opportunity with the sale or anything else down the line with what you're doing to get a survey done?
Or? Could, could be. I mean, sure, we could, we could do that. So I guess that's just the question. So we, we feel that we can measure and come up with what the adjustment is to add and subtract from the two properties. So essentially what we're missing is those two measurements by the road officially.
I believe to do a boundary line adjustment. It requires that, that the plots be on file. In the town office. I mean, if you have two properties. And you want to do a boundary line adjustment within those two. That they both have to have a survey plat, an existing survey plat. I believe that's the.
It is.
The ground rules. For, to do, to do a boundary line.
And, and what you're, what you're pending on to your lot, your one acre lot, that's all surveyed, you said?
It is. Correct.
Ah, any other com, any other discussion here that's?
We've got a couple of questions here.
Sure.
Dana?
Uh, thanks. Uh, just out of curiosity, was, was that Ingalls property originally part of the fusil? Parcel? And was that subdivided?
I don't believe it, it was. No, from the research we've done, it, it doesn't subappear to that. And talking with them, I don't think it was ever a part of their land.
Okay, because I was gonna say that, you know, maybe that there'd be something on file for that subdivision.
Right.
Thank you.
So I, I had a question. I, in, in order to do a boundary line adjustment. Wouldn't, wouldn't the sale of the property have to take place first? I mean, wouldn't it have to be an owner of that oh eight two oh oh eight in order to do the adjustment? Because we're really adding to that property, aren't we? I guess that's a question. I, I.
Yeah.
Well, we have to figure out the acreage first before we can. Exchange minds.
Excuse me? Can't hear you.
Do you already own the property or no?
No, no, we just own what is, is inside the Ingalls.
You own, you own the Ingalls piece.
You do.
You owned it.
We do. Oh, maybe I wasn't being clear. We do own the Ingalls piece. And we're trying to purchase some from the fusils. And this is sort of step one. And the question is. We, the part we want to extend is surveyed. But the other half towards the front of the house isn't really on file with the town that we can find. So the, so step one was to ask. Do you, do we have to get it surveyed before we move forward? Or is there enough info here? To me, there is, but like you said, Howard, it's the rural state that it needs to be on file with the town a full.
Now, now even if we were able to do a, a boundary line adjustment, you still would have to have a survey done. To show the piece that you're going to be picking up. So you're going to be, you're going to be getting pretty involved in a survey. Regardless of, no matter what happens here, I think, you know. It would be a little less certainly, it would be an easier step. Wouldn't have to go through subdivision if. If you could do the boundary line adjustment, but. With the amount of survey. They've got to get in there to do the survey, that bounty line where you want it, that bounty line is marked on the map here. And I'm just wondering if you're going to get the surveyor to go that far. Uh, if it just, wouldn't be just as well to have them. You know, do the rest of it. I, I don't know what the difference would be with the surveyor, but that's kind of what. What, what I'm kind of wondering.
Is a surveyor required to figure out what land would be changing hands? Or could it be done with measurements and?
The surveyor needs to do a survey plat and put monuments in and everything. So he's got to put a monument in. On that west side. He's got to, he's got to survey it to do this. And in doing so, he's, he basically. Got a survey around. Somewhat, you know, within those boundary lines that you've got there in order to establish that one line that he wants to put across. Yeah, by the time he does that amount of survey. I'm just wondering, there's not a whole much lot left to do, you know, to, to complete it down to the road and, and survey the entire plot.
I, I agree with you. And in talking with my neighbors, that we came up, you know, there, there are boundary markers. And he, he was confident that we could figure out. What was going to be exchanged on our own. And I had questioned that because I've never done this before. So on my next question was, is it required to have a surveyor to figure out? Because we're going to essentially draw a line from the one eighty three right out to Northwood Park, looking at this map. That's what we're going to take. That's the plan.
But we would need a survey.
We'll, we'll need a plat.
Okay.
With the. We need it anyway. So the surveyor's got to go in there and do.
And sign that plaque. He's got to sign off on that.
Okay.
Make it official.
Okay.
So it has to be. You know, there's not too much left after he goes.
No, I, I agree with you. I mean, what's.
If he's, he's got to create a plat anyways. That's the surveyor's question.
Yeah, I see you, Norm.
Were you calling on me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, as always, I'm having trouble with the boundary line adjustment. It seems to me the fusil property is being subdivided into two lots. And um. So I don't, I, I guess I question why is a boundary line adjustment and not a subdivision permit? It's being, it's now six point two acres and afterwards, if I understand. Situation will be five point four two. And it'll create a one. Point zero acre lot to be added on. So. Uh, the applicant will have. Two acre parcel. But.
Well, we've been through this before, Norm. Go ahead, Howard.
He's not creating another parcel. If he was, he was creating another, you're not creating another parcel. You want to have. Your one acre lot that you own now. Uh, part of this piece you're going to pick up. So when you get all done, it's just going to be one, one parcel. You're not going to own two parcels.
No, sir.
So he's not, he's not doing it subdues. He's just moving the boundary.
No other homes are going in there or anything like that that would kick it into a subdivision.
We're basically erasing the one eighty seven line and drawing the one eighty three line all the way to Northwood Park.
You're, you're correct.
Yep, that's, that's where the adjustment comes from.
Okay.
So is, is this an old map? Uh, because the Ingalls names here. And, and in order, for the purchase, wasn't it, isn't there a requirement for a survey? Or is that a plat for when the purchase is done? Or is it not? I, that's a question again. And, and I'm asking that because if it's a recent sale, I would think there would be, we would have the survey on file.
No, 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 no. We can, we can, you change hands, properties can change hands. With no surveys or anything. I mean, you don't need a survey unless you're subdividing and creating some new boundaries.
You need a deed.
My misunderstanding.
Yeah, and they have the deed. So that's, that's what they needed for the property transfer.
Okay, so we have, have we sufficiently answered the questions, Barbara, for this?
Well, I'm not sure. They prob, no, they, they probably don't know our answer. Um, but I, I think the answer would be that we would, we do need a survey. For our plat, for the plat that gets filed. For this boundary line adjustment.
Okay.
With all of the property, all the new property lines on it and.
Reflecting everything and that, that would be. Um, included in this application and dropped off here. And then I would be brought back in for another meeting to approve that before we could move forward, right? Is that how it's going to work?
Yes.
Okay. That was the question that I needed to answer, so.
And since you got to go that far, you got, you got to create a plat anyways to do this. Almost. Probably just survey the whole thing.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I make sense.
Most of the boundaries are there.
They are.
Yeah, and then, you know, it protects you in the future too. You've got it. So.
I think I'm good.
Yeah. I think we did answer the question.
You did.
Okay, well, thank you for coming in. We look forward to getting the additional information and seeing you again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, down to old business. Some of this stuff's been kicking around a little bit. With the, especially with the ordinances. Uh, has, there's been a couple committees set up. Um, the first one, um, let's take that one that I'm calling it the building notification ordinance right there. It's the, or construction ordinance. Andy, anything to report to us?
I spoke with both Howard and Jerry this week, and we're going to meet subsequent to this time and, and try and come up with something. But we have nothing to report so far.
So I think, I think how this would work best is, um, we, we've. Got somebody at VLCT who can draft up an ordinance. And then our town attorney can review that draft. So. We don't necessarily have to spend a lot of time in what the legal wording should be. But I think for VLCT, if we can have. You know, the, the essence of what we want in, in the ordinance. And keep in mind, he gave us, he said this could be done three different ways. Um, we could have a built, the town could adopt a building code. But then there would need to be an inspector. Um, by statute. The town could do a subdivision amendment. But then, uh, an administrative officer or a zoning administrator. So administrative officer would need to be named. To oversee this. And then this third option was a zoning bylaw, which doesn't apply.
Okay, um. We will, we'll meet together in the, in the very near future and we'll try and come up with something. Obviously, the first two, the first two items, I don't think are going to. Be met with a very warm reception by our select board, but we'll see what goes.
Yeah, I'm not. Go ahead, Norm.
Look, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I'm not certain that a zoning ordinance is going to be warmly received either.
No, I don't. Yeah, I think, yeah, there's, he, the VLCT attorney gave us three options, and that was one of the three. And I think we can probably take that off the list.
The other two would involve a, a, some form of new employee.
Or give him more work.
You, 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 you said that, we didn't.
Okay, so we're waiting for the, um. Uh, the building ordinance committee to come back with a recommendation maybe next month or something? Is that what I understood from Andy?
Yes, I think that's a fair assessment. By the next meeting, we'll have something.
Great. Thanks, Andy.
Yeah, even if it's some bulleted items, Andy.
Okay.
Of what we, you know, what, why we want this. You know, put that down and then we can hand it over to a lawyer and say, you know, how would this fit into what's allowed? By state statute. But yes, we'd love to review that whenever you come up with next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and the, the, um, other. Ordinance to be that we're working on right now. Well, we don't really have another one right now. Um, the, the noise, the nuisance ordinance. Um, we. We've got some anecdotal, um, information from people around town. Um, the one person who is having a particular problem is not willing to come before us. Um, and speak in public. Um, and, and to maybe make the problem worse with his neighbor. So, uh, we haven't gotten too far in that one. And I don't think we've even set up a committee for that. But let, I think we should probably just work on the construction, the building one first.
Agreed.
Okay.
Okay. Um, we do have a, a subcommittee or a committee working on the energy. Part of the town plan and what to do with, with all of the recommendations that were at the end of that, that energy section. So, um. I think I mentioned this before, but just to remind you, uh, the select board has the energy committee. And that's the structure they'd like to work through, what they have already set up. So. We've been trying to convince them of the need to get to this list. Of recommendations and, um. A month or so ago, I asked, can we do a survey of residents? And they said, okay, let's, let's work through the select board energy committee to do that. And then I came back after working with Sherman and Norm on the survey. Went back and said, okay, we've got some questions. They said, okay, make sure it's in our packet for two weeks from now. And at that next meeting, they, they, they did say they would refer it to the energy committee, which hasn't met in some time. I can't remember the last time they've met, but, but they said they would refer it to that committee. So I gave you, uh, the last, at our last meeting, we had just come up with this list to make, we thought we had a deadline with the slipboard. To get them these survey questions. So I wanted, definitely wanted you folks to see these. Uh, they're still, you know, they're still very much in draft form. So if there's anything in here that you think is missing or should be taken out, uh, this is a good time to, to do that. Because we'll be meeting with that energy committee anytime now. Did, did everybody get a chance? There's twenty two questions. There's quite a few. Um, but we're thinking of doing this online. Through a, a service, something like Survey Monkey. And, you know, just getting, we're getting the word out where people can, you know, link to the survey. And, um. You know, they can, we're thinking that they check everything that applies to them, everything they agree with, everything they would like to see. Uh, and give them for each of these questions, a, a small text box where they can put in some comments as well.
Barbara?
Yeah.
Uh. Having s- attended the select board meeting, or at least a significant portion of it on Tuesday myself, just sitting there. By the way, those of you who, who know me pretty well, it, it's rare for me to sit through an entire meeting and not say anything. But that actually happened at the select board meeting, right, Barbara?
Yeah, I didn't know you were there at all.
Well, I, I was in the room and you, you couldn't see from, uh, from the angle. But the, the question that I had is that, um. Uh. Who was it that raised the question of Bennington Rutland Opportunity Council and this, this work is already done by them? That was, um. Oh, uh.
Yoffe.
Uh, yeah, Don. Don was the one who raised that, that question. And I didn't know if that had any impact on the work that we're doing or not. Because in my mind, if we're surveying our residents. That's different than what Brock or any other philanthropic group might be doing to help, help people. Or assist them in, uh, acquiring. Uh, efficiencies or. So. We're just trying to get a sense of what people, uh, what the priorities are and what. How we want, how we or the select board wants to focus work in the next. Uh, few months or years, right?
Right, right. The answer to that question could be, well, I know everything I need to know. Um, you know, Brock and.
Right.
And he squad, you know, do a great job, you know.
Right. And then I put that in the, in the text boxes and we get a, we, we get a response from a certain percentage of the, uh, respondents. Who, who say that that's information is out there and is available to them.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the other part of that is that whether it's ARPA funds or whatever, there's. There's most likely going to be a lot of weatherization money available, uh, across the state of Vermont. After this legislative session.
I think the questions are just a good way, and it's timely, to, to create awareness for residents of the town who may not have that awareness. So. I, I don't think that they're incompatible.
Right, and that was the, the first criticism, um, I've heard. Of, you know, of a survey like this from the select board.
But that was the first time you heard that raised, that concern raised?
Or any concern about doing a survey.
Were, were there any other concerns other than Don's?
No.
No.
Um, that said, there were no comments either.
No.
Sherman, did you want to add anything?
No, I didn't. I think you covered everything. I. I'm good with what we said.
Okay, Barbara, I have to, uh, step out. I'll try to join back in if the meeting hasn't ended. I've got to go do another presentation, but I'll be back. I'm going to stay on. Uh, I'm just going to mute myself and go off video.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, the, the object of meeting with the, the energy committee, the select board, is to go over this and edit it. You know, it's, it's still a draft and, you know, what questions do they want to keep in? So. It, it could be done relatively easily, um, with townspeople. Even getting the word out, so.
Is there going to be? I- is there going to be something, for instance, in the circle that says? Brings attention to the fact this is online and ready to be answered?
Yeah, oh, definitely.
Okay, I mean, we need to get the word out, even perhaps something posted in the. Oh, in the town office, town clerk's office, to get as much response or generate as much response as we can. You know, the more people that answer, the more interest is shown, even if it's negative. And the more the select board will respond, in my view.
Yeah.
Not much you can do right now until the select board is, is in their committee that they're going to put it in the energy committee, until we hear back from them.
Right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was not suggesting, yeah, I was not suggesting, Howard, that do, I just. If, if it's approved and if it is going to go, then, uh, go forward with a survey, then it needs to be publicized. Uh, separate from just putting it on the website, in my view.
Yep, yep, there's ways of doing that. And, um, you know, it'd be our request that we be part of the, that meeting. And, and work with the, the committee on this survey.
And, and Barbara, just, just in our defense a little, uh. I, even, even though Brock's a large organization, it, it's not clear to everyone what, what services Brock offers. I certainly don't know what they are.
I agree.
I have an idea. And it's true of these other organizations and, and it's not. I mean, the questions we're at, we're, we're putting out there to, to provide answers to. Are not questions that I think any of us could just come up with and, and give a good, you know, know all about it. Uh, so we, we're, it's an opportunity to provide information to the community if they're interested.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's true. And, you know, I think there's also assumption that these programs are only available for low income people. And that's not the case.
Yeah, and, and the financing certainly is, is available to, to more than low income people. So it, it, there's. I, I think there's a lot that, that could come out of this. Uh, and, and we just have to. Hopefully be able to make that argument when the discussion comes up.
Yeah. Bill, who sits on this committee?
The energy committee?
Yeah.
John Paul and, I think it's John Paul and Mary and Joe.
Okay.
Mary and who?
Uh, John Paul, I believe it's John Paul, Mary and Joe. They were originally formed to discuss the solar arrays that were bringing brought, brought to us. That was, that was their origination. They haven't expanded on that yet.
That will, they'll be appointing new committees after the election on March first.
Yes. Committee assignments always get redone after the March elections.
Uh, do they usually shuffle around?
Absolutely.
Ah, okay.
Bar- Barbara?
Yeah.
Is there any likelihood that we will meet before the? Town meeting with the.
Well, not after what Bill. Well, not after what Bill just said, because it's very likely the makeup of the energy committee will change after town meeting day.
It's apparently, it's apparently possible that it will happen, yes.
And I'm not sure they'd want to meet anyway.
Yep. Okay. Well.
Okay. Well, if anyone has any comments, let us know. The committee is Norm, Sherman and myself. Okay, moving down to the report from the select board. We did really not too much. I think even from the last two meetings. We talked, you know, the energy survey, we talked about the public park public meeting on March 3rd, which is still all virtual, but that's okay.
Any idea what time?
Oh, yeah, 6:00 PM.
March 3rd, thank you.
Yeah. And there'll be a, there's a separate, a distinct Zoom or link for this. And it's, it's on all of the promotional materials. It's also on the town, the town website and the calendar on the town website. And if anyone needs any flyers, I've got extra ones. If you, there's places you see where it might be good to have them out. Yeah, I think that's it from the, oh, oh, I know what I wanted to mention. They did approve a preliminary design for the sidewalk going up Route 7 North between Comcast and Post Road. They had some options. They had four options, two on each side of the highway. And they picked the multi-use option on the west side. And it would stay on the west side that whole distance. And once it gets up the post road, there would be a, a fixture where people could, could hit the button and change the light cycle so they could cross over. I forget what that's called. So that, so, so now the design, the, the consultant they're using to make the design will go and, and come up with a final design for that?
Their plans March or April.
That's great.
Then we take that, and we can apply for a design construction grant.
Through AOT?
Yeah, the same, same place. We, we applied for a design construction grant and were denied because we didn't have a scoping study. So they said, they allowed us to modify our application to apply for a scoping study. Now I'm done, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that was the unanimous decision to to make it wide enough so that it could be cyclists and, yeah, and pedestrians. They would have to fill, fill up some of the, the land would have to be filled in, in some places, like in front
Painting walls and things, yeah, there's
Yeah.
recent modification.
Yeah, even in front of businesses, like that, that one appliance store.
Yeah, that's, that's going to be a big one.
So.
Is there federal money for that?
Um. Yeah, with some might come from the federal government, but it, you, you get it from the state. Yeah, so that's, that's the latest on that one. Mentioned the Pocket Park, the, you know, the latest on that is the public meeting. And Andy, you'll be interested in this. Did you, did you happen to hear that that Supreme Court decision on Snowstone Quarry got changed?
No, I have not. I, I get the Herald every day, but I haven't seen anything on that.
Now, you might want to get BT Digger in, in your, your list of news places, too. Yeah, so they they, they just turned that around. They, they said, no, it's not how much of the parcel you use. It's if you're using a one-acre parcel, that will fall under Act 250 jurisdiction, and, and, and the town can review that.
Excuse me, Barbara, I think if it's more than one acre, is it not? Not just one acre?
I think it's one acre and above.
Okay.
I believe. And on top of that, the legislature is talking, there's, there's legislation moving through that would codify that. So there's never a confusion again in the court system about one, what one acre means.
It's good to hear.
Okay, any other announcements? Or any announcements? Mary Beth's been making the rounds with the city, and she was with the select board the other night about the, you know, the early work being done on the, the Belmont Trail. So, you know, everybody's excited to see, you know, what comes out of that. I guess we're ready for the minutes. If there's nothing else. The minutes from the 27th of January. Norm?
Yeah, I've just got a few little nits. Under Old Business paragraph one, what?
Let's have a motion and a second first.
I'll move that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I think maybe Andy beat you.
Ooh.
Okay, Norm.
I like that, Barbara. Good. We can have a pool. Maybe we'll have a pool. Who gets to second?
We need a little competitive spirit here.
Yeah. All right. Under Old Business number one, I think it reads better if there's a period after the word group and they is a capital T. And in the next line, I think it's, project should be T apostrophe S.
Now, the next line.
The second line, second line of that paragraph one.
Oh, okay, the, before, the project's website.
Apostrophe S, yeah.
Project websites either, yeah.
Or probably, yeah, one or the other, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's probably better to just take the S off, Sherman. I like that. Then on the next page, under Old Business. First line, right toward the end, I think the word already can be deleted, so it reads has met once and plans. I'm not sure, already adds anything.
Is that number two on, 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 on page two? Is that what you're looking at?
No, go to Old Business.
Yep, Old Business is at the end of page one.
And
Old Business on Enhanced Energy Plan.
Yes, excuse me, that's correct, Barbara. It's in the middle of the second page.
Oh, okay.
I, I didn't say that correctly.
I missed it, I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. And I just suggest that the word already be taken out, so it says Cohen, Pulling and Hunter has met once and plans to meet again.
Okay. Not sure that's necessary.
It just reads better, it just reads better to me.
Okay.
Further down, under Pocket Park, Old Business, number two. I delete the word draft after A, so it reads a MOU for access on the site is being drafted.
You did what?
Well, I would take out it now reads a draft MOU for access on the site is being drafted. And I suggest to read an MOU for access on the site is being drafted.
You go to where draft.
Delete the words.
You're changing the meaning of it and saying that.
Yeah.
Because
Okay, all right. I understand. Okay. Thank you. And then in three, the second sentence. After the word responsibility. Let's see, there are some questions on costs and the responsibility of those costs. I thought it should read for F O R, for those costs still to be worked out. It says to still be worked out or still, you know, it's I think it just reads
And while we're at it, could we add archaeological, additional archaeological assessments? Because that's all that's left for, it's still in three, but just
Oh, okay.
Near the beginning.
Sounds correct to me.
Well, we can't, we, would we add that? I mean, we didn't say that at, at the
I didn't say that?
I don't know, it's
Did I say cultural? If I didn't say it, then let's not do it, but I sure as heck meant it. Yeah.
And
I'm going to add it under announcements tonight, so you can
And I think that's all.
Done before, it works. What else, Norm?
I think that's all I have.
Um, how about number four there? We have the public meeting being at the town halls. That can happen, Bill? I, I thought JP said
The public meeting will be, they'll be here, but maybe public.
Okay, so that, that's what you have. This, this room will be open.
Yes.
Okay. But we're not encouraging people with Okay, um, how about on page three, not to prolong this, but in the, in announcements, when Mary Beth's talking about the Belmont Trail. Page three, number two, the last sentence of number two. The goal of the project is to develop a trail system which connects Killington all the way to Pulteau. That's, that's the segment she's working on, right?
That's what we're talking about, yeah.
And, and not the
Back to the Slate Valley Trails and Pulteau.
Right. Even though the, the whole trail will be statewide, north to south.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so is that it for corrections?
I don't have any more.
Howard, are you good with accepting those?
Yes, just a, yeah.
All of them? I'm just kidding.
I missed them, but they were good without the corrections, so I'm good with them.
Okay, all those in favor?
Okay, go ahead.
You got it?
Aye.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes as amended, please say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, anything else? Next meeting will be on the 10th of March.
Very good.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.